The meeting is called to order at 6:58 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second, please, that the agenda of November 7th, 2017 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion and a second that the board approve the following consent agenda. Approval of minutes of October 24th, 2017 is submitted. Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education. Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education. Acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes. Request to approve the recommended bidders. Direct Energy and New Wave Energy per the Cooperative Bid RFB #18-02 with the Gates Childy Central School District, East Rochester Union Preschool District, Reshamniata Central School District, and Penfield Central School District for natural gas supply for the period 7/1/18 to 6/30/19. May I have a motion, please? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Alright, we have some special reports.
We do. We have two special reports this evening. One on our Monroe County Youth Risk Behavior Survey results. And then we'll hear from our elementary school principals with their action plans. But coming up to the table now, just like introduce Wynton Buddington, our principal at Bay Trail Middle School. Dr. Maloney, our principal at the high school. And Mary Beth Walker, the K-12 department chair for both physical education and health. And we appreciate you being here this evening.
We appreciate the opportunity to update the board and the community on the findings of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Kind of broken it up into three different parts, so you hear a little bit from each of them.
I'm going to begin this evening with the background information regarding the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. It was created in 1991. And it's used to gather and analyze national data. It's administered in a two-year cycle. And it supports grants and initiatives within Monroe County. Penfield Central School District utilizes the data to analyze behaviors and trends. We also use it to reflect on current programming, to make recommendations for curricular changes in our modifications. Our last administration was December of 2016. And that would be the 2017 cycle when it relates to the Monroe County data. We're going to begin with some positive findings that we have from the survey. We see an increase from 40% to 30% in students watching one or more less of TV. And this is all related to the health and self-advocacy. We see an increase in our students being physically active. Under safe decision-making, we see an increase in students not getting in a car with someone who has been drinking alcohol. We've also seen an increase in our middle school students avoiding unwanted conversations regarding sex on the internet. Under safety, we're seeing an increase in high school students reported that they were not called names, teased, harassed, or bullied, in addition to our middle school students. So we've seen an increase in both areas, both levels, in related to our bullying behaviors and how we address that.
The ACES are... An ACES study was done, about 15 years old actually. But it was a study that looked at adults in their 50s and 60s. And looked back at... It was really sponsored by the medical community from a health perspective, looking at their health in their 50s and 60s, but looking back at their childhood experiences. And what the study found was that people that have adverse childhood experiences, there is an impact on their health in the future. And what it looked at was the adverse childhood experiences in the areas of abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. And the greater number of ACES somebody had, the greater impact potential for health risks in the future. Even things like if they were in a home that struggled to put food on the table, there was a greater percentage for women to have osteoporosis in their 50s and 60s, which makes somewhat of a medical sense. But the other part of the impact of this study was really looking at the people that that wasn't the case for, that had similar ACES as a child, but didn't have that impact as an adult. And that's where it starts to inform us. And in this year's administration of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, ACES questions were included. So we have data from our students around those adverse childhood experiences that we can look at. Now, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is anonymous. So it doesn't give us specific names of kids that have that. But it helps us, as Mary Beth started off with, as we look at our programs and we look at trends in our curriculum, it gives us another layer to look at. And the impact for us is we compare ourselves to Monroe County. One or more of our kids have... 49% of our kids have one or more ACES. Three or more have... 13% have three or more in Penfield. We're less than Monroe County, but that's still a significant number of kids that have an impact. And that impact can be in their behavior, in their social-emotional status, and in their health. So as we look at some of the target areas that align with that, one of the areas around inappropriate behavior and choices students are making is the sending of inappropriate pictures. And we've seen slight increases in the students that have sent them. It's interesting that we've seen a large increase in students reporting they've received them. So they must be getting them from somewhere else, because their kids aren't saying that they're sending them. And but we're also seeing that increase in the middle school. So as we look at some of the data from the ACES studies and correlate to behavior choices that kids are making, it gives us target areas to look at to say, okay, how are we going to address this? What are we going to look at in our curriculum, in our programming, in our communication to help address this? Mental and emotional health is an area where we've seen increases in both the middle school and high school reporting that someone in their home insults them or swears at them or puts them down. That's one of the indicators from the ACES. You have somebody in your home that's yelling at you, swearing at you, or putting you down in your home. The areas where students report about feeling sad or hopeless have stayed the same. So we had a lot of areas in the study where we're not seeing comparing to the previous Youth Risk Behavior Survey data, we're not seeing a dramatic increase or decrease. They're staying relatively the same. And the other area that we've seen the bigger increases is with the use of electronic cigarettes.
So this slide here is significant. Let me walk you through what you're seeing. The data that's showing under the columns 2013, 2015, 2017, that's PHS data. And then MC 2017, that farthest to the right column, that is Monroe County data. And so typically in the past, we've done this presentation when we receive the PHS data. And this year, we waited to be able to provide you with this Monroe County comparison. Because I think with all that we've experienced over the last few years, I think we've all found ourselves asking the question, why us? Is there something here? And this data here shows us that comparison to Monroe County. So in terms of the first, whether a student has considered suicide in the past 12 months, you'll see that our data is in line with the trend in Monroe County. Whether a student has felt sad or hopeless for two weeks or more, we're a little bit lower than in Monroe County. Whether a student has used an E-SIG, this data right here was a surprise to us. We did not expect to be at a level higher than that in Monroe County. And actually, Tom and I, we were talking... This is something that we talk about frequently. Because it's such a new trend or a new craze, it's difficult to find programming to provide students, to teach them about the risks. When you look at some of these other pieces, for example, whether students considered suicide in the past, we have the Sources of Strength program that we've been working to implement. We've brought in Kevin Hines, we've brought in other speakers. Whether students felt sad or hopeless in the past two weeks, the same thing. We've also done a huge push this year in terms of getting the word out to students about the supports that we have in our counseling office. Last spring, when we had the listening sessions, one of the things that we heard, which was a surprise to all of us, but we needed to hear it and we needed to respond to it, was that students weren't sure who their counselor was or weren't sure, did we have therapists at the school? Do we have psychologists? Do we have psychiatrists that the students could work with? And so we've built that into our seminars, as well as I've got on the morning show. We're really trying to address all of these aspects. But back to the E-SIG, that's one that we're working with the health teachers, trying to figure out, how are we gonna tackle that so that when the next dataset comes around, we're back in line? So back in the middle there, riding in a car with someone who had been drinking, you'll notice that our percentage there is lower than Monroe County. And students, we get great feedback. Many of you have attended the crash reenactment in the spring. As Wynton mentioned, the nude and the semi-nude pictures, whether they're sending or receiving. Again, we've modified our seminars at the high school. And we're actually, this week, bringing in someone to help address that because we had seen this to be an issue. Students being bullied, called names, teased, harassed in the past 30 days, that number is 6% is significant in terms of this data in being lower than the Monroe County average. And then that last piece, have you lived with someone who's depressed, mentally ill, or suicidal? That goes back to that ACES work that Wynton was mentioning. And I'll talk a little bit more about this in the upcoming slides. But the high school in Bay Trail are working... Bosse's is actually bringing in a presenter, Dr. Kenneth Ginsburg, to talk about resiliency and how do we nurture that in students? And I think this data, he speaks a lot to the ACES data and how to address that within schools. So I talked a little bit about the curricular action steps. This looks at the curricular action steps from a K-12 perspective. The health teacher, we have a health teacher from PHS who is going to the elementary grades to teach health. And I've heard that it's a very positive experience for the teachers, the students. And our teacher is really enjoying teaching it. This summer, there was some work done with the social-emotional learning curriculum alignment, K-5, which included the second steps curriculum. If you remember back when we implemented full-day kindergarten, we adopted the second step curriculum. And we've been rolling that out since we implemented full-day K. And now it's up through 6th grade. Mary Beth's team worked... PE and health worked to infuse health units into PE at Bay Trail. So it's really that cross-curricular piece making those connections.
So that gives us continuing at Bay Trail with personal development class in 6th grade, a health curriculum in 7th grade, and then a health piece in those 8th grade.
And we received, as I mentioned, last spring when we had our listening sessions with both the public and with the students, we received a lot of feedback around the health curriculum. And again, perception is reality. And so we sat down over the summer, Mary Beth and Nicole Whitehead helped lead the health teachers through, how can we take that feedback and make some changes? The More Than Sad curriculum is now being delivered at the high school level. And that was something that we had talked about in years past. And it was something we had kind of shifted around. And the program itself has actually been redesigned. And the health teachers worked on bringing that back into the high school. Mindfulness is a hot topic right now. We actually, our skills instruction class for students with special needs, we've shifted that and we now call it Skills for Success. And it includes a mindfulness portion. So students are not only learning academic skills and strategies for studying, but also mindfulness strategies to calm themselves and to really use some of those breathing techniques. And whether they're anxious for a test or whether they're anxious over maybe an argument with a friend. And then the redesign of the grade-level seminars. We had had the grade-level seminars at PHS. And now, the counselors and the administrators, it's an every-other-week cycle. And the first week, the students meet in a small group with their counselor. And then the following week, they meet in a large group with their administrator. And like I mentioned, this week, actually, all the students will be... In 9th and 10th grade, their seminar will be an FBI... Someone who works with the FBI coming to talk about social media and some of the dangers with social media. That continued implementation of Sources of Strength. I don't know if you saw my tweet from last week, but we had an amazing national... One of the national trainers come in and trained not only a new round of students, peer leaders, but also our previous peer leaders. Because Sources of Strength took a little bit of a beating during the listening sessions last spring. And we really wanted to rejuvenate the energy. And this trainer was fabulous, kind of helping the kids overcome some of the stigma around Sources of Strength. And then resiliency strategies, continuing that work that's going on in the PE units at the middle school. Mary Beth has been working with the PE department to also weave in those resiliency strategies at the high school. And then action steps in terms of our parents and community. I think we've all, and when I say we all, all of the building principals have been working on goal number two, those partnerships. And really helping bring that programming to parents. Our PTSA, Wynton and I, Bay Trail and the high school, our PTAs are going to pair, to work together to offer a NAMI presentation. NAMI has a redesigned parents program. And we're hoping to be able to roll that out brand-new. We also have the Greater Rochester Health Foundation partnership, which I think you're aware of. I know a board member, Mr. Piper, has been helping with that. The Rochester Regional Health Partnership, I can't say enough positive about that partnership. Through that partnership, we have three therapists, two at PHS and one at Bay Trail, who are Rochester Regional Health therapists. And they have, for lack of a better word, office hours at PHS and at Bay Trail. And our social workers at the building help connect families with Rochester Regional. And it's just been such a great partnership. The kids really respond well to the therapists. And it's taken a little bit of a load off of our counselors. In the past, it felt like we were trying to... Does anybody know of a therapist who has openings, who we can try to connect this family with? And because they're right here in the school, our social worker can help make the connection. It's just been a really great partnership.
For a lot of those students, it's also students that might have had difficulty getting transportation to see an outside therapist when that therapist had hours available. So making that connection available here is providing some of those students support that they wouldn't have otherwise been able to get from an outside.
And then some of the other partnerships, NAMI, the Mental Health Association of Rochester, they are hosting some of their support groups right here at PHS. The Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council worked with us to bring in Kevin Hines. And he is rescheduled for November 27th. And our prevention counselor at PHS has coordinated a resource fair. And we're up to 24 agencies, mental health and substance abuse agencies. And that's right before, it's an hour before Kevin's presentation. And then the Eastside YMCA, I'm not sure if you're aware, but this is really an awesome opportunity. The Eastside YMCA came to us in the spring. They offered some fitness classes here and then said, hey, let's partner together and work to get students to the Y. And so they offer a discounted membership, $10 a month for students. And we have a bus that leaves PHS each day and goes, takes kids to the Y. In terms of action steps for the staff, we have a behavioral specialist who is half-time psychologist at Bay Trail and half-time a behavior specialist across the district. She is absolutely phenomenal. And then that professional development piece. Scott Dreschler has done an amazing job of bringing in therapeutic behavior management workshops for staff, different mindfulness training, that partnership again with Strong that we have. Scott works to make those connections. And then the Dr. Kenneth Ginsburg, the resiliency workshops. And all of our school action plans, you'll see that focus on the whole student and really making sure that we're looking at not just the academic needs of a student, but also the social-emotional.
So the data we get from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey really helps focus and target our efforts. But as we look to, how do we address that? How do we support students and how do we support the whole student? It really is that partnership with the parents, with staff, with community, with multiple levels, working with our elementary principal colleagues, building up those resiliency skills in the elementary school. So as they come to Bay Trail, we can further develop those. So when they get to the high school and as they progress and that anxiety level may increase, they're better prepared. So it really helps us target those actions and support our students. Questions?
Board members, any questions? Mark?
Well, in some respects, yes. There's so many things going on that you do. And I think it's a good time to talk about it. When we're comparing a survey that's consistent here every couple of years, we have the benchmark. You talked about a lot of things that are very great initiatives. What percentage of the school year would you say is dedicated to providing these kinds of services to the students, roughly?
I think it's difficult to narrow it down to a specific percentage because it's part of our everyday workings. And it really is... It feels kind of like the hug around the academics. So it's, you know, each student is here for academics, but then there's that hug that we give the student to provide them with their social-emotional needs. So, you know, in terms of specific programming...
And some of it is, you know, we bring in a speaker. We just had our friends from Sweethearts and Heroes come into Bay Trail and talk about hope and empathy with the students. And so that was a one-day event. But around the building, there's constant messages to follow up. So it's hard to say that, okay, that was just a one-day thing because the message is still there. Red Ribbon Week in all the buildings, those messages are still up in the building. So if you look at that, it's still ongoing. And we do, as we look to target the events, we keep in mind the balance with the academics. But oftentimes, those outside speakers give us that little bit of boost and to re-energize us as well when they come in and give their message.
If I can jump in on that too real quick, Mark, just to say, you know, we're talking about some events. We can quantify how many health lessons the kids are getting. We could quantify for you how many lessons where we've targeted resiliency instruction in PE. We can talk about the requirements for health at the middle school and elementary school level. And we can tell you how many social-emotional lessons kids are getting at the elementary school level. But what we can't quantify is how our teachers are taking what they're learning from people like Ginsberg, from the mindfulness training and from other opportunities, and infusing that into what they're doing with kids every single day. And it's becoming part of the way that they interact with students. That's not quantifiable, at least at this point. And that's really where we want to be. What we're seeing is, what we're talking about is a little bit reactive to the data, but it's our efforts to be proactive moving forward so that we can continue to see decreases in the areas where we need to see those decreases. So, you know, it's great work to look forward and say, how do we continue to improve in these areas? And how do we make it part of what we do? Not an event, not an outside thing, but it becomes part of the way we do business when we're interacting with our students each and every day.
And, well, thank you. I really wasn't trying to say, you know, are you spending too much time or too little time? But I think you answered it the right way, is that it's integrated into everything you do. It's an important part, and you spend time and effort on it, but it's integrated in. So with that, and we've talked about the health surveys, can you give us some idea of the feedback from the staff and the faculty is experiencing in the classrooms? Are they, what are they seeing as a result of this as well, beyond the survey from the students?
What are they seeing in terms of?
Classroom environment, shall we say? Or is it?
One of the areas at Bay Trail this year, and I believe it was based as well, we're focusing on what if that's safe and supportive environment? And for the whole student, for different students, students that are experiencing multiple ACES and students that have one or zero ACES. How is... That's a staff conversation that really is working on culture and building culture in that environment so that when a student comes into the classroom, they feel safe and supported so that they're ready to learn, they can approach learning and face challenges. Because we want to challenge them, we want to stretch their thinking. And to do that, they need to feel safe so that they're supported in that challenge. And so that's part of the conversation. What does it look like in one classroom versus another? Those are important conversations instead to be having with this. They're doing a fantastic job in getting them to share their knowledge and expertise about how they reach the certainty that they think is supportive. That's where the power is in the conversation. We're not, we're seeing, you know, as far as report the data or behavior data, we're seeing a little bit of a decline in that as those environments keep changing. These are data about fully decreasing. It's the one that I think kind of speaks to that.
And I just want to speak up. I can only speak from the disciplines that I interact with on a daily basis. And what I'm seeing is our kids looking out for each other. I see our kids willing to take a little bit more of a risk because the environment has become safer for them. So, once again, I think what we're seeing is the more we can give the messages from different avenues, the more kids will inherently own it and act it. And I think what we'll see in the future is, I'm not saying our environment needed it, but I think just more of a safer environment for all of us.
Thank you.
Carol?
Thank you for your presentation. Lots of data here. So I just have a couple of questions. We've always had parents who refuse to let their kids take the survey. Do we still have that? And has that decreased, increased, or is it the same number?
We do, and it has decreased. So I can definitively speak to the high school. It was less than 10 students who have opted out. I think, once again, we've been doing this. And since we've implemented it in the middle school, I'm beginning to see that parents find value in the information and how we're utilizing it. And once again, it's a comfortable environment. So the numbers for opting out are decreasing.
Agreed. And so the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is open to all students. And that would include students with special... so the youth risk behavior survey is open to all students and that would include students with special needs?
Correct.
And is there any way for you to know, you know, if a student of special needs responded in some way or another, just?
Everything's anonymous.
Everything is anonymous.
I, I will say, you know, to be, to figure how we deliver it, the students in the life skills classroom, because of the comprehension and the, and the questions do not, we do not give it to them. Sensitivity at the top.
Correct.
Direct in their understanding of the topic.
Okay, all right. Okay. Um, I, I have two more questions.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure, does any, is anybody else going to, okay.
Okay, we have more questions.
One more, Carol.
All right. So do we compare our data to neighboring districts? We do it for the tax rate, for test scores, for this and that. Do we compare the data of the youth risk behavior survey to the neighboring district that we usually compare ourselves to with everything else?
The Monroe County data includes the neighboring districts. The middle school does not use or utilize Monroe County data. That's just a 9th through 12th. What we have done in the past, we as administrators of the youth risk behavior survey, we meet on our own and we compare our middle school data. And I can tell you that that group is specifically Pittsburgh, Brighton, Fairport, Webster, us. It's a very selective group. We have not taken that step yet for this data.
Okay.
General comparison is changing, the county, not us, Pittsburgh, correct.
Okay. So I guess that's what I would be interested with in comparing to the specific school district. As far as the middle school, we've always been leaders, thanks to you, in giving it to our middle school students. And we were, I think, one of the first school districts to do that. So that is fine. I'll wait for my last question.
Okay.
Mine's not really a question. I understand where it's.
Thank you. That's very kind of you. You talked a lot about the listening sessions. Will you have other listening sessions this year for the students? I sat on the parent's side, you know, the ones you had with the parents, community members, and that was quite the eye-opener. Then we heard about what you heard from the students. So will you have something, some form for the students to see how are we doing?
That's the beautiful piece of our new seminar structure. We're able to get that feed, we're getting the feedback more at live time. And in terms of having a specific, specific listening session, we can absolutely use that seminar time. Right now it's ninth and 10th grade, and then in the spring it'll be 11th and 12th. And I am fortunate to be able to have that built right into student schedules.
Great. Thank you so much. John?
Yeah, I, I do a lot of listening sessions, as you know, in my line of work, but I deal with a lot of the ACEs. And last Friday I was at a seminar with a national expert. And this may or may not come up when you do the county one, but one of the highest growing number of ACEs is childhood religious trauma. So I'm not sure if the overall group is considering that as a fascinating presentation. Sometimes, you know, we talk about manifesting when they're in their 40s or 50s. This is exactly after years of therapy it manifests. And it's not necessarily abuse or anything. It can be dogma or things of that nature. So just something that you may want to follow.
I don't think that was a question I meant.
No.
No, no, but, you know, growing, it's, it's one, it's an ace, you know, type of thing. And there's many more than that. But it's just fascinating that this is just the growing role for some reason.
Yeah. And actually, if you're interested in more information about the, the ACEs, there's a great film, it's called Paper Tigers. And it's about a school in Walla Walla, Washington. And actually, it's a school that our sources of strength, you know, leaders and, and folks work with. And it's a school, it's an alternative education program where the school specifically focused in on students and their ACEs. And it's a very powerful film. It gives some insight into the ACEs and then how they can be used in the school. Just that connection to our sources of strength, folks, makes it even more powerful, I think, for me.
Any other questions? You know, this, uh, this was a great presentation and thank you for everything you did to prepare for it. We all, we always look forward to this information and we appreciate the work you do. And it sounds like what is happening is you can take this data, like you were saying, and work with it to, you know, fill in gaps or whatever. But it's also creating expectations that the students seem to be responding to, which we can see because of the improved scores in certain areas. So it's obviously very helpful to have the information, but it's even more so effective when you can make those implementations and those changes. So, you know, it's a slow and steady kind of thing. And it's kind of a sad situation that some of our students, well, it's just a weird time that we're living in and some of our students are living with, with stressful situations. So with our whole student commitment, it's working really well within that regard. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, go ahead.
Last thing I'll just add, the other part of the ACEs study is, one of, and it really ties into the work that we're doing is, one of the biggest determinants of students overcoming the ACEs is having a caring adult in their lives that's never going to give up on them. That, that loves them unconditionally. And that can be the parent at home. And that could be a teacher at school, that could be administrator, that could be a board member, maybe a superintendent.
You never know.
But it's, it's that. It's, it's that caring adult in that safety, that supportive environment that can help build that resiliency for students to overcome the impact of the ACEs.
Exactly, exactly. And then, you know, when it starts maybe in the middle school and goes into the high school, maybe then by the time a student graduates, there's many more than just one caring adult. And that's really a supportive system. That's terrific. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
So as we transition, our second special presentation this evening is our elementary principals and their school action plan. And so we'll invite our, our four elementary principals up. I, I will hold off on introducing you. Maybe you guys can introduce yourself so we can, everybody can put a name with the building. And I know everybody here knows you, but for our viewing public at home.
Good evening. I'm Steve Kenny. I'm the principal at Cobles Elementary School.
I'm Marcy Wareham, the principal at Indian Landing Elementary School.
Scott Herschler, principal at Squidward Elementary School.
And Mark Nelson, principal at Harris Hill Elementary School.
So thank you for having us. I'll be starting off tonight, which is always dangerous for my colleagues, but they didn't realize that when they let me do this. We're really excited to be here to share our school action plans. We have a lot to review with you, but we'll, we'll try to be as efficient as possible. But there's a lot of great things that we want to talk to you about and share with you. We're going to start with the first slide, just talking about how all the elementary schools in Penfield are working as a cohesive unit. Our, our work together is collaborative. This year in particular, there was sort of a metaphor for how we came together and it was the, it was the golf tournament that we all attended. And no matter how difficult the shot, or maybe the shot went a little astray at times, we were all supportive of one another. And that's sort of how we've been since we've come together as a group, since Marcy and I joined the team. And that's allowed us to reach some of these bullet points up here is, is really being consistent in our approach to elementary education in Penfield, but also preserving some of the cultures that are in our buildings, making sure that we don't lose what's special about each of the places that we work at. But then making sure that all students, no matter what school they go to, really belong to all of us. And us working together is ensuring that, that students have access to that type of programming. Want to start this frame by saying thank you. Your consistency with the goals has allowed us to really dig in and make significant commitment to the first goal, which is the progress towards academic achievement and excellence, as well as the whole student. We've made exceptional growth towards that. We have a lot of work to do still. But your consistency with keeping the goals the same has really allowed us to dig in and make incremental growth towards these things. And we want to talk about some things that are consistent with each of our buildings. The implementation of the whole student, every building, every elementary school in Penfield has really embraced this. We're talking about whole student while maintaining the academic excellence that exists in our programs. We've started to roll out some professional development that really addresses not only whole child, but also looks at our RTI programs so that we're meeting the needs of all kids and maintaining the excellence. Technology has been something that we've been gradually building as we go, and it's really difficult to, to keep up with that. But we've been working as a group to make sure that our kids have access to all that's out there in terms of technology. And then later we'll talk a little bit more about formative assessment. But each of our buildings has representatives that are going to the Monroe Assessment Project. And all four of us have attended the training as well. And we're starting to think about how formative assessment is helping us meet the needs of kids and promote academic excellence. In addition, the whole child piece, we're talking about, and SEL curriculum is getting rolled out this year. And a three-five health curriculum that's being implemented at this point and a keyboarding K-5 curriculum. And last but not least, each of us has a plan that consistency, consistently addresses the rollout of the ELA mission and vision. So we're all have, doing it in our own way, but there are consistencies that allow our kids to have access to that type of consistent programming. So goal two, these are some of the commitments that we've been able to keep collectively as elementary buildings. And this is just fostering learning, communication, understanding, but also the positive culture that exists in all of our schools. I'm going to make you go down to one of the bullets on the right-hand side, and that's the PEA Scholarship Kickball Tournament. I want everyone to know that Indian Landing did in fact take the trophy this year. But I just want to talk about through that competition, how it brought all of us together as elementary buildings. It brought the community together and it was a great event. I think that's a great representation of how we're, we're celebrating one another in a, in a way that's positive, in a way that allows us to, to have fun, but, but come together as a group. We talked a little bit about the consistent professional development. We're all talking about different ways to service kids through RTI and through professional learning communities. Each of us is using social media in our own way. Some are exceptional at it. Someone to my left is going for the Twitter record this year. She's close. We all welcome back seniors to our buildings every year, which is an amazing event. Each of us does it a different way, but we celebrate the kids that went to school and all the great things, all the great members they had. And I think the seniors actually like it more than, than our kids. I'm, I'm not sure about that, but they really enjoy it. And then the participation in the Buddy Olympics is another special event. I'm trying to just and there's been a couple of things that have been added this year, the PEA 5K, which was a new event, which has been embraced by the elementary buildings. We'll continue to do deceptive book fair and create opportunities to bring kids from every building out in early December to read with us. And the blue and red ribbon weeks are consistently implemented across our buildings. And we're trying to be consistent in how we do that with our employer, of course. And bullying prevention certainly is a consistent part of our program across elementary buildings. So now I'm just going to switch gears and talk a little bit just about Cobles and then I'll hand the clicker over to Marcy. We've been doing some amazing things at Cobles and we're really excited to share with you. A couple of new things that we've been able to build on. Specifically, I want to speak to our character ed program. We've sort of rebranded our program at Cobles and we call it the Patriot Promise now. We felt like we wanted to have a connection in K-12. We calls, we call our, our eagle Chris, who stands for caring, responsibility, integrity, and self-discipline. And I forgot one of the Rs in there, C double R I S. So it's responsibility and respect. And we're trying to align to the district, district theme Patriots. And we use the Patriot Promise as the umbrella to our character ed program, which is basically show those different characteristics in all that you do every day. So we're continuing to build that program. We do have a school-wide matrix that we developed last year. We asked teachers and students to develop that collectively. And we rolled that out this year and it just gives kids a guide mark to go after each day in their behaviors, whether they're on the bus, in the classroom, in the cafeteria. It's direct observable behaviors, that positive behaviors that we want to ask kids to show us every day, rather than that, don't do this or that. So that's a, a big part of what we're doing this year. Another part that we're taking care of in terms of bringing the community and is our shared decision-making team has created Patriot Promise books, which are books that go home to every single household that have a theme around one of our five characteristics that were five themes that we're going after in terms of character ed. And we'll continue to use Twitter to promote all the great things that we're doing every day at Cobles and continue to build on the, the previous relationships that have already been built on previous years. That's a pretty good summary. So I'm going to hand it over to Marcy.
Thank you. Okay. So similar to what Dr. Kenny just described, I'm going to skip around bullets. Our partner's pride, our mascot is an eagle, again, keeping in line with the K-12 Patriots pride. And our eagle is called Partner. And Partner's Pride is something that has been part of Indian Landing for several years. But we, similar to Cobles, last year did a little bit of a revamp and a tweaking of our Partner's Pride initiative and really focused on positive behavior supports all day throughout the building, rather than just monthly assemblies celebrating selective students. We put in some initiatives that really recognize students every day and give students different opportunities for recognition. And we did some of the similar language, building a common language of be a partner, connecting to the district initiatives, the character ed initiatives, and giving kids a common language so they knew what the expectations were. We start off every September, did it last year, we did it this year, where students, they go on a road show where every class moves around the building to different settings and they learn the expectations and those setting-specific expectations. So they go to the cafeteria to learn what's expected in the cafeteria. We have the monitors and another adult there teaching the students the appropriate behavior and what they should be doing. And they do that throughout the building. So those were changes that were made. Those are done through our partners and learning committee, which is the shared decision-making team at Indian Landing. And we continue to look at our goal for this year. Our focus is looking at our environment, the visual environment, and how that will support, what messages does our environment send to kids when we walk through the halls? Whether it's the language you use, the things that we have on the wall. So that's one of the things we'll be looking at this year. Other things that are new this year is our, it's the first bullet, the staff collaborative opportunities. We follow the model. Mr. Nelson was very helpful last year, I think for all, all three of us, helping us understand how the model of Harris Hill of having one day of no RTI, what that looked like. And that's something we've started this year. And the focus for those days at Indian Landing is collaborative opportunities for staff. So it's time for grade levels. If they need to have some vertical teaming, we're able to do that. So K-1 teachers can meet together, two, three teachers. It allows literacy specialists time to meet with grade-level teams. It allows me time to meet with grade-level teams as needed. The focus is on collaboration. I use that time to bring the directors in for some initiatives that we need to cover. So we're really emphasizing those collaboratives. They are busy days at our building, but they are very, very worthwhile. The other is we started professional book studies during our faculty meetings. Those were optional. Every staff member signed up. There were eight books to select or to choose from, and they each took something they were interested in. And we are devoting time at just about every faculty meeting for that collaborative discussion on the book studies relating to things that we felt like aligned with our initiatives. The rest of the bullets are pretty similar to what we've had in the past, continuing community service projects. Last year we focused on Galasano Children's Hospital and did several community service projects throughout the year to benefit Galasano. This year it's Make-A-Wish Foundation, and that was something the students selected and voted on. We gave them some options. They brainstorm ideas. And we had them make a difference day pancake breakfast a couple of weeks ago and raised over $600 for Make-A-Wish. And then we have our red-white basketball game and do athletics and things we'll do later in the year. And again, those partnerships, Mercy Ministry, Brighton Fire Department, all those things we'll continue that we've done in the past and do our best through social media to get the word out and celebrate those partnerships.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here with my fellow colleagues. And as they've mentioned, there are a lot of partnerships that we have in common. Some are identifiable by our individual schools. And collectively, we're so happy to be part of a united front in Team Penfield. So. So to top it off today, we had a wonderful author visit at Scribner today, Selena Yun, who is an author of over 160 books in her tenure. We had three assemblies today and a luncheon. And to go along with the socially emotional learning with students, all of her books are centered around acceptance and friendship. So that tied in nicely with everything that we're doing around the whole student. Also this year, a couple of new partnerships that we're continuing to brainstorm through our shared decision-making team and character education committees. One is Cameron Ministries, which is an outreach center in Rochester that provides meals, clothing, and shelter to those in need. And this is in a neighborhood where I formerly taught in the city with 98% poverty rate. So we're looking forward to partnering with them. In addition, excuse me, after brainstorming with our character ed committee and our shared decision team, we discovered that we wanted to do something in regards to disaster relief efforts. And in discussing that, our nurse, Kathy Harris, mentioned that she had a friend who's a nurse in Houston, Green Tree Elementary School. And in this particular district, 41 of their schools underwent severe flooding. This particular school, 60 families currently are still displaced. So we have a very personal connection and are going to be reaching out to them and partnering in whatever ways that we can brainstorm that we can help support them. So we're looking forward to that. Girls on the Run has been a great thing across Penfield schools. In the past few years, we've had two teams focusing on instilling self-respect, exercise, pride, and healthy living, culminating in a 5K race, which has been wonderful to see. We do, at Scribner, like my fellow colleagues, have our own character education trait. We are Scribner kids who care. This year, something different. We are undergoing and undertaking an initiative called Only One You, and it's based on a book by Linda Crans of the same title, Only One You, in which we had a full school project based on opening assemblies that each student decorated and designed their personal, unique rock. And this book focuses on the uniqueness of the individual and to go out in the world and make a difference. So when you come and visit Scribner, you'll see our wonderful display in the front of the building. I forgot the rocks tonight, but come and visit. It's a good excuse to come over to Scribner. And that's going to be a theme that weaves its way throughout the building all year long and ties in nicely with all of our mental health initiatives. We also have a patriotic assembly that's hosted by our first-grade classes and staff. We hold this in May honoring the servicemen and women who sacrificed and provide services still for our country. Last year, we had over 60 veterans attend this wonderful annual touching event, and they came as far as, from as far as Colorado to attend this. So that's a very touching thing that I will send out invitation to all of you to attend. Our first Lego League Robotics Team. Happy to announce that just over this past weekend, one of our teams, called the Ninja Water Warriors, that adopt fire hydrants, have received the Core Values Award for being supportive and inclusive team during the competition. So that's a first award for them. So congratulations to them and to all their efforts. As you can see on the slide, a myriad of PTA events. We can't speak, I speak for all of us. Our PTAs are wonderful advocates for all kids in Penfield and our individual schools as well, and we could not be as effective and give everything to our students if it were not our partnership with them. And as Steve mentioned, December 2nd, at the Webster Barnes and Noble, we have our annual Septa fundraiser in which all of us read. We have our wonderful Penfield Music Department out in full force to provide entertainment for the public, and it's the one big fundraiser for Septa. Rounding out, we also have a Tales for Tales reading program and Read Around Scribner. Tales for Tales is when we have therapy dogs come in, we read to them, they behave for us, everyone's happy, it's peaceful, and everyone gets a nice training in how to interact and enjoy the love of reading. And last but not least, we are having a school play. Mr. Nelson has done this for a number of years, and this year, we are going to be performing Alice in Wonderland at Scribner. So we appreciate all your efforts and the efforts of the community. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to start off, as I do every year, by thanking you for the opportunity to talk with you, to address your questions. I know you have our action plans. I know you see our slides, and we welcome those conversations because I think it brings a public forum to some of the things that happen on a daily basis. So thank you for doing that, and we really do appreciate the consistency. As Steve started the presentation, I will be sort of wrapping it up. The consistency of the board goals is incredibly beneficial to students. So thank you for doing that. The whole student approach has been something that reassures us that we aren't just about test scores and numbers, that we're about the little souls that come through our doors every single day. So thank you for doing that. You could literally erase some of these schools' names and put Harris Hill on it. A lot of these things are consistent across all four buildings. And as the old man you see here, who's been around the longest, it hasn't always been that way. And I really attribute that to you, to the board, to our superintendent and to our assistant superintendent for coming in and saying, we will be a consistent force. So thank you. I just want to highlight a couple of things. I know that the community can read the bullets, and we will have conversations about them. And we had a very adventurous year last year. We implemented a lot of new things at Harris Hill, and I appreciate the opportunity to try it a second time. The school action plan, as you look through it, a lot of it was building on successes from last year and trying to see how it worked with different cohorts of students, in particular looking at our Red Day, our RTI processes, examining and the use of and expanding the cohorts of our Monroe Assessment Project. Those are all things that we jumped in relatively early and wanted to jump in relatively early to see if they would affect students. We're seeing wonderful benefits. The journey has just begun, and I appreciate the opportunity to be part of that. But a couple of things that I want to highlight. One is we did switch, we were working with Cameron, and I really, you know, you learn something every night. I didn't know that Scribner was doing that, so I feel a lot better because we kind of abandoned them. And it wasn't because we didn't have a wonderful experience there. It's that something came across our door this year that supported that whole student approach that the board is talking about, and that is we're teaming with the Salvation Army, this Operation Family Time. Our community outreach project, our holiday giving project, is really centered around that whole concept of bringing the family together. So we are bringing in across our building board games, DVDs, snack foods, popcorn, those sort of things, and you create gift bags that are sent off to families in the city and around the county through the Salvation Army to promote family time. We all know with screen time and all of the things that go on in the business support schedules and everything, you see that sort of fracturing, not fracturing, but pulling apart of that family to pull some time back together was important to our community. And so we partnered this year. We're going to let you know how that goes, but we're really excited to get involved with that. The second piece is our SDM has been really strong, and it's been strong ever since I've been there, and we continue to look for ways to strengthen our character education program. The Hound Tickets last year, our PBIS system, bringing those students and getting them recognition throughout the school year for positive role model behaviors has been, has been really a wonderful addition. What we wanted to do this year is try to bring that message to the home on a consistent basis with what we're doing in the building. So our SDM has created tip sheets and things that are going home to the parents to, so that they know what we're focusing on during the two-month period of time we're looking for those role model behaviors. And those are really, again, a lot of these things are continuing. I'll do the plug every year, you know, in a couple of days on Thursday, 9:00, 9:45, we have 100 and I think it was up to about 125 to 130 veterans and friends and family that are going to come through our door, so much so that we're going to, we have to move it to the gym. We can't house it in the cafeteria. That started with three vets a bunch of years ago. So we have a vet from World War II coming, 100 years old. He knows somebody who you're sitting next to. He's going to come and talk to our kids. I get teary-eyed when I think about that, I really do. I think that's a wonderful connection for our kids and the community and the veterans. So if you get a chance, come on over. I really appreciate you coming over to Spooktacular. I love when the board members show up. You get a sense and a feel for all of these things in the voices and the eyeballs and the expressions of the students and the parents. And that's what I think you saw, is we're walking around and you're feeling it. It's one thing to put all these things down, it's another thing to be there and experience it. So that's where we're at at Harris Hill. We're really excited about the growth, continuing your mission and really working together as a team. This is a great team. I'm going to be straight up, this is a great team. We trust each other, we work hard, and we talk with each other. Jim and Tom, wonderful leadership, pulling us together and saying, this is the direction of going, and we really are a trusting group of souls that are, that are really making, and I believe, making that elementary experience work. So the last piece is the financial piece, and I know Mark Stansfield loves this piece, so we have to talk about it. And that is, we are very committed to your, to the values of the community, fiscal responsibility. We are constantly looking at ways that we can cut costs, share staff, look at resources, share resources from a central purchasing standpoint. Jim and Mark are with us the whole time, asking us those questions. What do you need in your building, and what can we, what can we purchase and use across the four buildings that makes sense? I can't thank you enough for the playgrounds. I cannot thank you enough for the playgrounds. That has been a wonderful addition to all of our buildings. I tell people that Harris Hill is the oldest new school I know with the, with the library and now the playground and all of the additions. It feels like a new school, and we are so thankful for that. So we're fiscally responsible, we're a team, and I talk more than I was saying. I'm not going to say much, and then I talk less. Questions?
Board members, questions? Barb?
I'm speechless, which is hard for me to be because, and yet, I'm so very, very excited to hear all that you're doing collaboratively because I was here when you were each little islands, and I know that you're still creating your cultures and supporting the cultures that you have, but at the same time, the whole concept of Team Penfield has been embraced. Of course, I was the recipient of losing Dr. Kenny to the golf tournament because he was on our team the first year he was here, but I, he asked me first, so it was.
Okay.
Yes.
You did.
Yes. But I, I mean, I've written down everything that you said, and I'm really excited, and I can't thank you enough for taking the opportunity to work together and to, and to show your staff and your students, as well as your families, that it can be done, that we are really, truly Team Penfield. So thank you.
Kara?
It's not really a question, more comments. Like, I was smiling during your presentation because while I know one building and I have the best memories of volunteering in that building, the other three buildings I know through Facebook and your Twitter account and everything you've been posting. And I think that's wonderful. I might not like every possible one because I do have to do other stuff all day, you know, but it's, it's really nice at the end of the day to see everything that happens in our buildings. And I do love, you know, all the different activities, whether it's the old ones that are still there, like Veterans Day, you know, and that it's still happening, but also you're embracing all these new ones. And I think we're truly, truly lucky and thankful to have your leadership in our school. So thank you for all of you too. And please thank your staff and your parents for the support that they give you because it wouldn't be possible without them. So thanks.
And John?
I just have to agree with both of them. On the receiving end, as a parent of a kindergartner and a third grader, I'm into the fourth year at Harris Hill, and the last two years, I've really seen you guys gel together. I know I wasn't up here, but it's awesome to see. It resonates throughout the building, the culture, and then the kids bring it home. You guys are really rock stars.
And the other, John?
I enjoy Marcy's tweets.
So do we.
I only know one person who tweets more, he lives in a big house.
Oh, it's a different quality, John.
I do have a question, though. Is there a way that you evaluate if the staff has bought into positive culture, or, you know, one way or another? Is there any way that you look at that universally?
I personally, I did a survey, an exit survey at the end of the year, just for staff. It was very informal, just for my purposes after my first year, just to get some feedback. It was mostly open-ended questions, so it was really hard to quantify things. So I think that helped shape some things for this year. I look at how well my PEA meetings go. I mean, I laugh when I say that, but I think it's, that's a partnership as well. It was one listed up there, but when you can work and problem-solve and be proactive together, you know, that's certainly something to celebrate because it's not like that anymore.
For me, I think you can feel it and see it, especially feel it. It's something that resonates throughout the whole building, that positivity. You see it in smiles, you hear it in the laughter, the collaboration, people just wanting to be together, and I think that's pretty evident throughout all four buildings.
So, what was it? Okay, well, I do too. Yes, please go ahead.
I already asked permission from another board member. I just want to just share a couple of things. Just, it's a great presentation. Mark did a great job selling Veterans Day, and I have two more years at Cobles, and then I can go somewhere else. But my father comes into town, he's not the 100-year-old gentleman, that would be related to Jim Pfeifer. But I know the Veterans Day, and I can just speak for, the veterans absolutely appreciate it across the district because for a lot of them, they never got thanked when, when they, you know, my dad always say he never got a day off of school. He got to go to work when we all stayed home from school, so I know it goes a long way. And I just want to give kudos. Steve mentioned the 5K for the foundation, and I do have to share that Harris Hill did have the highest participation. So you do have a trophy coming, they're working on it now. But I can also share that, that the Board of Education had the highest percentage of people who signed up, but, but you guys weren't in the running for a trophy. So it's coming over to, coming over to Harris Hill, and just because nobody else was sitting up there, I believe it's Dr. Kenny's birthday tomorrow, so.
Oh, happy birthday, Dr. Kenny.
Nice job.
You did say something, though, in the presentation, that kind of, amongst many other things, there was one thing that really blew me away. Have you ever seen Murder She Wrote, that show? Okay, where she's typing on the typewriter? Okay? That's how I learned to type. I learned how to type in high school on a typewriter like that, okay? And then you mentioned that there's keyboarding being done in kindergarten, and I, I am just, I mean, I know that this happens because these are the times we live in. But when I think of my own experience compared to what the kids are learning today, it is a phenomenal change. And then I get sad because I long for the Murder She Wrote days. But.
It's hard to play Minecraft on the typewriter.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it just doesn't work, you know? Your presentations tonight were wonderful, and the board really appreciates the time and the energy that you put into all of it. And what we're seeing tonight is, like Barb said, about the collaborative nature of working together, maintaining identities, but Team Penfield, and it's, it's just a great thing to see, and it really, really shows when you see these students in action. And that's what I love about going to see what you do and how the kids interact with each other. It is, it's amazing and it's wonderful, and it feels like we're having quite the upbeat, you know, conversation tonight. But I think it's really important to take the time to do that and feel good about what we do and effort. we do and efforts that you put forward. It's a lot of work, but you can see where the kids are really, they're, they're starting to shine. I mean, they always do, but there's times when we can really focus on that. And that's what the work is, that we're all dedicated to, and those are the people we're working for and it's, it's wonderful to see. So thank you so much for coming tonight, for everything you did to put this together. We appreciate it all and, um, thank you.
You know, I didn't want to say me too, me too, but as I see here, here when they'll talk, I also see when, and Leslie back there, um, nodding their heads. They, they, I think they recognize and appreciate all that you do and they know that their success is dependent upon your success. As you're successful, as you have raised, help raise and educate these children, that makes their job easier, it makes it easier for them to be successful and carry on. So that, this is, you know, that is the foundation of, of every student. So it's, it's extremely crucial and I think we're all very appreciative of what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. All right, this would be visitors speaking time. Do we have any visitors to speak to? Okay. All right, we will move on. Claire?
Hi. Hello.
Hello.
I think most of the principals, um, covered a lot of the stuff that's in my report, but, um, uh, for these past two weeks, the school celebrated, um, Red Ribbon Week by attending encouraging assemblies and following schedules for dress-up days in order to show that Penfield students strive to live healthy lifestyles and to stay drug-free. Um, Harris Hill celebrated Red Ribbon Week by inviting Nell Ross, who rode a unicycle and spoke to students about making healthy choices. And Harris Hill also hosted their annual Spooktacular, where students dressed up in their Halloween costumes and celebrated with games, face painting, and candy. Um, at Cobles, students learned about sharing and building positive, positive characters with their peers during a fall-themed best buddy activities. And, um, at Indian Landing, the school dedicated a little landing library, which was a free library that relies on the honor system, to students in part, in partnership with Rotary and Boy Scouts. Um, Indian Landing also kicked off their school-wide reading incentive, in which Indian Landing students collectively read Three Thousand Seven Hundred and Forty-five Minutes. Um, fifth graders also painted pumpkins based on book characters to celebrate Halloween and their love of learning. Um, at Scribner, Scribner celebrated Red Ribbon Week by planting tulip bulbs outside of the school and inviting Master Kim to share valuable life lessons that can be learned from Taekwondo. And on the twenty-fifth, Scribner students wore orange against bullying on Unity Day, in which students celebrated being united and spreading kindness and acceptance. Students also were given the opportunity to read their favorite books with therapy dogs at Tales for Tales, and Scribner hosted a Fall Fest night, in which students ate con candy, decorated cookies, and spent time with families and friends. At Bay Trail, students wrote down their key to success and being, and being drug-free on paper keys that were hung around the school. And Tom and Rick from Sweethearts and Heroes visited Bay Trail to teach students about different perspectives and overcoming adversity. At Penfield High School, sources of strength students met to begin work on their generosity and spirituality campaign. And it was a big week for athletics at Penfield, with, um, boys JV volleyball, uh, ending the season undefeated, football beating Fairport for the first time in a decade in a score of twenty to seventeen. Caitlin Hogan and Abby Guyan moved on to states for tennis. And Toni Accarella was named Class A Champion in Swimming and Outstanding Swim with the Meet, and her relay, um, competition also broke a school record. And Tyler Sinal was named Class A Sectional Champion in Tracking Fields, and girls volleyball played at the sectional finals.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments for Claire? Wow. Wonderful. Thank you so much, Claire.
Ready for me? All right.
Yes, please.
Claire has started the meeting again. All right. Here we go. Here we go. So, um, uh, just, um, some student and staff honors, uh, tonight. I'm gonna actually, we gave Alan McNiff the night off and I'm just gonna go through our building emergency response plans and our fire inspection update. And then, uh, we have, um, we have, uh, Chuck Bastian with us tonight and we're gonna do an overview, uh, of the two thousand eighteen Elementary Additions Project, an update, but also around financials. Um, although it says Mark Sansucci up there with, uh, Chuck, um, we arm wrestled before the meeting, so I'm gonna actually take that part of the, um, presentation, so Mark can save his voice for enrollment report and the initial review of, believe it or not, the budget goals, assumptions, and guidelines, which means this next year's budget season is, is among, it's starting. Um, so, uh, clothing drive, this is always, um, a little bittersweet, but Trevor George, uh, one of our Scribner students who passed away in August two thousand fourteen, his parents have worked to, um, create the Trevor's Toes and Tushies Sock and Underwear Drive, and they do this every year in October. And, uh, every building and district office participated and donations were, uh, brought to them and they actually pick them up and they were distributed this year to, um, Happy Birthday, Cha Cha Cha, Pencils and Paper Project, and the Willow Domestic Violence Center of Greater Rochester. So just a, a great opportunity for all of our schools. It's, it doesn't go to students, just adults, but the staff, um, and, and folks come forward and, and donate quite a lot of great, um, um, clothing for little kids. Uh, Make a Difference Day, uh, which we talked about and I believe we heard a little bit about, but this is at Bay Trail. And, um, the school district, uh, participated in a Make a Difference Day Food Drive. They collected sixty-five boxes of food and supplies for the Penfield Food Shelf, and kudos to the Boys and Girls Volleyball Teams for helping with sorting, packing, and loading the boxes. So just a, a lot of great work across the district. You heard from Marcy where Indian Landing, they did have a pancake breakfast fundraiser that they said they actually, uh, raised about six hundred and seventy dollars for Make-A-Wish Foundation, so some happy kids eating pancakes over Indian Landing. You always know it's a good event when, uh, kids and their families are excited to come back to school on a Saturday. So, it's great. National Honor Society induction, uh, congratulations to Henry Burnett, Natalie Hansen, Alexander Hutter, Michael Nikosia, and Rachel Wells, who were inducted into the PHS chapter of the National Honor Society at the Fall Induction, which is only five. Remember that the, the big induction's in the spring, um, before they become seniors, but then they do have a second opportunity to apply, um, in, in the fall. Those are my updates. Uh, now I'll turn to the building emergency response plans. So just as a reminder to the board, um, that back in June two thousand seventeen, the board approved our district-wide emergency response plan. This is a requirement from the state. Uh, the district is also required to complete, uh, updated building-specific emergency response plans. So each of our building has to have a separate individual plan and they have to, we have to approve those on a yearly basis and we have to submit them to the New York State Safe School Platform. Uh, the plans have to be also formally adopted by the Board of Education. The process, so the, as a reminder to the board, is that each of the building updates their emergency response plans and sends them to the District Safety Coordinator, one of many hats, Alan McNiff wears. In previous years, the New York State Safe Schools, uh, we were required to electronically send the files via email. And now this year is the first year that the, uh, Business Portal, which is what we basically send everything to the state through, um, the Business Portal, we had to upload all of our, um, plans and then submit them through the Business Portal, and that was required to take place on October fifteenth. The board's approval is, um, a bit of a formality, um, because, um, there's a deadline, but we want to make sure that you're aware that, um, Alan oversees that and, uh, all the plans have been uploaded. We want to make the board, uh, make the board aware of that. Um, so the status now is that, uh, each of the buildings has updated their plan, um, the building emergency response teams and staff directories were all changed. Uh, we have completed the information required on the portal for New York State, submitted the plan for the requirement and, um, the, for the requirements, and the final requirement is board adoption of those building response plans. The annual fire inspection, if we're talking about safety, fire inspections are always important. And so during September, the annual fire inspection, uh, took place. It's mandated, uh, by the state of education. It took place in all of the buildings that Penfield owns, that includes the bus garage, B and G, district office. And, uh, Ms. Dawn Howe is the fire inspector at Genesee Valley Educational Partnership, um, and she conducts the inspections. All buildings were inspected and reports are on file. Uh, they are also through the New York State Portal. Um, any violations noted have already been corrected and all buildings are in, uh, are conforming to those changes. And, and every year we have, we have violations and, um, they're all relatively small. It's, you know, when, when you have a poster, it has to be two feet below the ceiling. If it's above that, that can count. Doorstops are a big one, where, where we can't have doorstops because in the buildings, um, all the doors are, are fire-rated and so they really should be closed. So it's just those small things and, um, Alan and his crew are amazing to make sure that they fix everything, um, and that we get a, we get verified that all of our, all of our violations are, uh, fixed. So as required by section eight oh seven A of the education law, public notice of the filing of the safety report was published in the official newspaper, the Daily Record, uh, this past Thursday, November second. And so that's one of those requirements. I'm sure everybody is reading the Daily Record to find out how their schools are doing, uh, with fire inspections, but we are very proud to be in compliance with all of that. Are there any, uh, questions on building emergency response or fire inspections? I may proceed? All right, thank you. So really excited for this one, the two thousand eighteen Elementary Additions Project, uh, an update. And just for the board, um, this, this update will be a little different than what you've seen before, thanks that Chuck is here to talk financials. I know that the board, I'm sure in district office, we may be a little tired of seeing the same slides, but it's important that the public, who, uh, hopefully is watching out there, does see it in case. They only turn into one board meeting, we, we want to make sure we're as transparent as possible when it comes to our capital project planning. So just a reminder, uh, thanks Chuck for, for coming up, I appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna go through a couple of slides and then we'll turn it over, uh, to Chuck Bastian for more of the financial update. So our scope, it continues to be the same, it's the elementary classrooms project and we're looking at four classrooms at Scribner, four classrooms at Cobles, four classrooms at Indian Landing, and then we're still, uh, looking at possible gym and cafeteria expansions at, um, Scribner and, uh, Cobles for their gym, and Indian Landing for their cafeteria, as well as we call site work in terms of our bus drop-off and pickup and our parent drop-off and pickup. And just trying to make sure that as our schools grow with students, we have enough parking and safety is always a consideration as we look at our parent, uh, drop-off and pickup. So the tendoscope also includes, as the board's aware, a purchase of an eleven-acre parcel out at thirteen sixty-four Jackson Road. And on that site, we're looking to build a joint transportation and buildings and grounds facility, and then utilize the current five-mile line road site where B and G and Transportation currently are to house a bus wash, a fueling station, and still have some buses there for routing purposes, as well as looking at moving our technology center over there, known as the Network Operations Center, as well as our director at Turkowski and our network technicians. The other piece we've talked a little bit about, um, but we get more detail here for the board and for the community, is infrastructure updates at Bay Trail and the high school. Every five years, we do the building condition survey that has a list of all of the items that really do need to be addressed at some point in all of our buildings. That's a requirement for New York State to do that building condition survey. And we're utilizing this project to do some work at Penfield High School and at Bay Trail. Um, our elementary schools get the really fun things like classrooms and, and, and new, uh, new pickup and drop-off, things you can really see. But in all of our buildings, just like our homes, there's always something that has to get done, which might not be as fancy as a playground, um, but, but are really important. So at the high school, we're looking at a replacement, the exterior insulation, uh, for the finish systems in various locations, masonry repair, replacements of filter equipment in the pool, replacement of the HVAC rooftop units, uh, replacement of kitchen exhaust systems, replacement of roof over the main entrance and main office area, and replacement of all the old skylights in the building. And over at Bay Trail, same concept, replacement of exterior insulation, some masonry repair, as well as replacement of the HVAC rooftop units, uh, replacement of two remaining nineteen-sixties vintage HVAC boilers, which I can't even imagine what a nineteen-sixties vintage, uh, HVAC boiler, uh, looks like, and I'm sure there's a cost savings once we replace something like that. And then a replacement of all the old skylights in the building as well. So not, not major work at these two buildings, but significant and have, uh, some facilities committee knows, these are things that have been on the building's condition survey that we wrapped up a couple of years ago and we know that, that work needs to get done. Now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bastian to talk about, uh, budget and the, and the fun stuff. Okay. Sound all right?
Thank you very much. Very good intro lead-in. So given all the, the scope of work that you have there from, um, building condition survey and some of your other needs and, uh, items that have been identified by the architect and construction manager with you folks over the years, over the months anyway, we've come up with a budget here from the architect in terms of construction dollars, which are what we call hard dollars, hard costs, and then also the incidental costs, the soft costs that are associated with that. And, uh, our office and your business office have to keep a very close watch on how the dollars get allocated between buildings and between those categories, construction and incidentals. Um, there's also one nuance to the incidental costs, our site work costs. So we'll have to make sure those are identified out of the top numbers down into the incidental categories and we'll watch aid ceilings and so forth as we go through. So as, as you come up with your finalized scope, uh, the dollars would be listed then in your referendum amount if the board chooses to go forward with that. And all of our numbers tonight are run on forty-three million, five hundred and seventy-thousand dollars for the, uh, the projections. But any questions briefly on the budget there? Initial breakdown? Okay. All right. Given that, as we, um, come up with then how that referendum amount gets allocated, we need to, from our aspect, uh, come up with a report that we have for you tonight. And we've highlighted a few of the key pages out of the overall report here on the slides in front of you, in terms of at least the key assumptions that you have for any school district doing any building project in New York State. First and foremost, we have a building aid ratio that we're able to enjoy with, uh, being an upstate school district, seventy-three point nine percent. Um, right now, the tentative aid ratio that's out for seventeen eighteen is a little bit higher than that, it's seventy-four point seven percent. But we've gone conservatively and gone with the latest that is an actual, uh, which is last year's rate. Uh, bond percentage is talking about the overall aidability of the dollars being spent at each of those buildings. So some buildings are a little higher, some are a little bit lower, but we blended it together, a little, little over seventy percent. And from there, given those numbers, we then set up the rest of the, the scenario, the borrowing plan, based on some dominos, a whole list of dates. And again, we all wish we could, after a positive voter ref- referendum, snap our fingers and have the construction done, but we know there's, uh, a process we need to go through. So between now and February of eighteen, the board would take a couple of key steps, calling for, uh, the voter referendum in some upcoming, uh, board meetings, but if you do target a vote date of February of two thousand eighteen, right after that, as you know, you're finishing up your eighteen nineteen budget. So upon a positive referendum, if that's how it is, on February thirteenth, we would be working with, uh, your office, district office, to make sure we have any principal and interest requirements into that eighteen nineteen budget. So we have time for that. That's, that's perfect timing. Uh, given that, we then talk with the architect and the construction manager, hey, when, when do you estimate SED approval? Given all the plans and specs that they would have to design and draw and meetings that they would have with you, get them into state ed, there's a new state ed process that's coming out now that's hopefully going to speed up the overall review process. And, uh, they're shooting for September of nineteen, so a little over a year later. And there may be some components that could have an earlier approval, some that could have a little bit later approval, but we have a target there of September of nineteen. At the back end of, uh, a building project then, one of the key items we need from the architect is when do you think you're gonna be completing the Certificate of Substantial Completion? And that's a form that goes into the state ed. Once that goes in, then we can file final cost reports and get the building aid flowing. So again, on the front side of some of these final approvals, final, uh, projects being completed, maybe around May and June of two thousand twenty-one, I think Gary Huffman from campus has talked a little bit about some of the projects may be completing there in that summer of twenty-one and maybe even the summer of twenty-two. So again, depending on the work that's gonna be done at each of the buildings and the phasing that you'll have, again, some of those dominos tip over in that, that sequenced order in terms of the phasing. And again, we'll set up the borrowings to match those accordingly. Uh, we would not want to borrow too early and, and have dollars sitting there if they're not being put to use for construction. So given that, then our, the last item there, uh, probably borrowing in the So given that, then our, the last item there, probably borrowing in the early spring of 2019. And continuing on, then the first interest payment would be that summer of 2019. So that's in your 1819 budget year and principal payment also. I mean, we'll talk about how that fits in nicely to what you have already in existing debt. We also have to pick out a couple of interest rates to start with. So bond anticipation notes, which are the temporary borrowings we start off at the beginning of a project on, around 4% and bonds at 5%. Today, if you issued bond anticipation notes, we're in the low 1% range, maybe 1 and 1/4, 1 and 1/2%. So we've left a cushion there. And likewise with serial bonds, you would today be around 3% for a 15 or 20 year bond. 30 year bonds might be a little higher, 3 and 1/2, 3 and 3/4 or so. So again, we've left a cushion there. The legal maximum period that we would have to take to pay back the bonds would be 30 years. But again, we would also structure each of those underlying pieces, again, the work done at each of the buildings to match up with the building aid that's being paid. Building aid in New York State's paid over either 15 years, 20 or 30 years, depending on what type of construction you're doing, whether it's renovations or additions or brand new. So we'll match up the, each underlying borrowing to the aid that's being paid on each of the building projects. You also have a sizable down payment that you've saved up. So that's nice, that reduces our amount that we'd end up with our bond at the end. Currently also, your Moody's credit rating, AA2, that's phenomenal as you know. It's only two notches away from the best, from AAA. And there's very few of those in New York State, just a handful. So a AA2 credit rating, again, that's good work to the district and the board for getting that back. And I think it was April of 2010, you were upgraded one notch to the AA2. So keep it, don't lose that, that's a fantastic credit rating. And the last item there, again, the target amount would be $43,570,000. Any questions on all the assumptions that we have there? Yes, sir.
Just back in the budget page, first page, is there a reason the dorm authority fees and the capitalized interest are linked together? They're not connected, are they?
No, it's typically two different line items that we have. We've just shown them together there to keep it all flowing easily. It's again, part of the incidental costs and it's usually incorporated there. We wanted to break those out separately. I know the construction manager, the architect, they like to see those separately. We have to report those separately on any final cost reports. They're really there as a contingency for the financing. Your architect and construction manager probably talked to you about contingency for construction and bid contingency and design contingency and inflation contingency on what they're constructing. We like to have some contingency too for your financing. Again, we talked about interest rates, we talked about aidability, we talked about timing. So if by chance any one of those slightly deviates, those are options that we have for us in terms of paying some of the interest cost for the bonds out of the project itself. Right now, it's anticipated that we may not need to do that, which is wonderful. Again, also the other piece there, the dorm authority, the DASNY, dorm authorities of the state of New York, that's there as an option for us if by the time we are ready to bond, we would want to bond through the dorm. We don't have to, right now, I think back under one of Governor Pataki's proposals, when it first came out, one of his proposals was that you would be financing. Any school districts doing any financing into the future would be done through the dorm. They ended up backing off of that and when the final legislation came out, whatever that budget year was, it just became an option. So that's kind of nice for us that if we want to do our financing through the dorm, we can. Traditionally, we've never done that, we've always done it directly with Wall Street. But the aidability changes whether we go through the dorm or go through public market bond with Wall Street. So we will look at that analysis for you and present that to you when we get to that point in time to do the bonding and see which one's best for you.
Thanks. When, we talked, actually this slide you were just on, we talked about the first borrowing. So we start the first borrowing early on, pre-construction essentially.
Right, if we're looking at state ed approval in September of 19, obviously no construction is really starting prior to that. So we may have a borrowing that we may want to do or need to do to cover any of the architect fees. I know you also have the capital reserve there too. So that's also some very good seed money for you. So it all comes down to the cash flow that we need from the architect and the construction manager. We asked for that early on and they keep revising it as we go through. And we have to monitor that in terms of how and when we set up our borrowings to match up with IRS regulations, SEC regulations. So that's a tentative plan as it stands now and it would fit into your budgeting cycle. Again, after the positive referendum, that's when we really get into the details with the architect, construction manager to give us really that much better picture of the cash flow. Because they'll have discussions with you about, okay, we want to phase this building first or that one. And you know, how fast could that construction go? Is it going to be a year? Could it be compressed to eight months? What are your needs in terms of phasing with any summer school or anything like that? So that will all play into it.
Does the state reimburse as we borrow or do they wait till the end of the project to start the reimbursement cycles?
Right, that used to be kind of the old building aid rules. Since 2001, the building aid rules now are that the state pays building aid starting roughly 18 months after stated approval or when you're filing the final cost report, whichever is later. So, right, so it really keys off of, that's why, you know, we're really watching these approval dates and the target dates. And if they change, they'll change, that's okay, that's no problem. We just have to be flexible with the borrowing schedule and leave different fallback positions for you for the borrowings as we ease into those borrowings.
So when you say it's a state aid for early borrowing, essentially zero and they'll catch up later?
Right, right, and that might be a very small borrowing, again, just again, to help cover some of the architect fees since construction hasn't really started.
Thanks.
Okay, so those are some of the assumptions to lay out the overall scope. The next piece here, this first bar chart, really is existing debt service that you have. So that, this is what we call the local share. So out of any principal and interest that you're paying on existing bonds and notes, less all the state building aid that's coming in each fiscal year for you into the future, you are then left with what's called local share. So, and I think Mark's mentioned this too in the prior presentations you've had, you're technically in a negative position right now, which is actually a good thing in this slide. So you're actually getting more building aid than you're paying in debt service because of the cash projects you've done through the year. So that's wonderful. And our goal is to match up to that black horizontal line there for you. Again, that's nice to keep that level in two factors. Again, one for levy cap calculations, it doesn't directly affect you too much because you're underneath zero, you're in a negative line. But more importantly, in terms of the budget. And if you can keep those bars essentially flat or consistent from one year to the next, that helps you as a board really coming up with your budget year to year. Anytime you have dips or jumps, then we need to work with that. We have to figure out what can we do to try to keep that smooth the best we can, given that this is all generated based on, again, the needs that you have here for construction from year to year, reconstruction, the building condition surveys and bonds that have been issued in the past. So that was one of the first things we looked at as they were, as you were also developing this potential project. And we wanted to see how we could marry these two together. So again, when we go below that black line, that's a good thing. What that means to us, that's an opportunity. How can we fit in anything new that you have coming along to use that extra, those extra dollars that are coming in in those years to help cover new project to keep you flat? Any questions on that page? It's a good looking page, if I can just summarize it that way for you. Okay, this page, you really cannot see the details, but it's a maturity schedule with a lot of pieces in it and a few intricacies, but nothing too extraordinary. It's roughly a 30 year maturity schedule overall. Again, because of potentially the new transportation facility being a brand new standalone building, the state's going to pay us aid over 30 years. So there is a 30 year component of the debt service, of the principal payback structure in that column C is the principal payments, column E are the interest payments. And column F is a combination of those two, we call that the debt service, principal plus interest. So underlying, again, this is a blended maturity schedule, but underlying here, again, you have some 15 year components, which are really the renovation projects. There would be a 20 year components where we have, where the additions at a building for the elementary schools are greater than the reconstruction dollars being spent at that building. The state's going to pay us aid over 20 years and then 30 years really for the new transportation facility. So you blend all those together and we came up with a payback structure in column C and then the interest in E. So column F has the debt service each year. Column G is the building aid that's coming in again each year. And you'll see how that is full here, those first 15 years. The next five years, it drops off a little bit because the reconstruction projects are done and paid for. And then those last 10 years is really the aid on the bus garage, transportation facility. So we end up with a gross local share, a net local share in that far right hand column. And why does that move around a little bit? Again, what we're trying to do is blend that into those nice dips that you had below the black horizontal line on the prior graph. And what we're able to do with the, you'll see these first few years are a little bit higher than the later years. So again, what we're able to do is we can front load a payback schedule. We can front load principal payments into the maturity schedule, we cannot backload. So that's okay in New York State law to front load, you're paying off your mortgage, your bond sooner, that's okay. And again, we're really fitting that into the dips that are going to be on, that were below that black line on the prior screen. So let me pause there and see if anybody has any questions in general on the overall maturity schedule? Okay. This is how it blends into that original bar chart and ends up with a new projected debt service bar chart. And it fits in very nicely, so it gets you back down around that $1.5 million number of the black line. And it buys you a nice, flat, consistent set of numbers out through, what year do you think that is, Mark? 2026? 2024 and then the 25 year is your next drop off. So again, we have a couple more BCS, building condition survey reports to do that you'll be doing into the future every five years typically. So 2020 will be one, 2025 will be the next one. After that, we'll just, we'll keep fitting those in as you come along there. So I'll pause there, see if there's anything else, Mark, that I missed you on a highlight? Or any questions from the board on those? Yes, sir.
So we, two years ago, we refinanced the bonds. So you have the opportunity to do that at any time or do you have to wait till a certain time if you want to refinance?
Right, when we, just like you're right, two years ago or last year, I think, when we refinanced that other bond, that worked out very well for, I think it was a $16 million refunding bond. So again, thank you to the board for adopting the resolution that allowed us to proceed and get you those savings. But any of these new bonds, just like those prior bonds, would have an eight year call provision. So again, there won't, there would not be one bond for $26 million. We'll probably have two or three even, underlying pieces in there, depending on the timing again. So as that gets issued, the key is, it would be, you know, there might be a 15 year, a 20 or a 30 year component or a blended component, but the call provision would be after eight years.
Great, thanks.
And I thank you for pointing, for reminding us of the refinancing. Because part of the positive nature of that first set of bars, they grew longer. We became more positive because we reduced our expenses by refinancing while we don't change the state aid. So the underlying state aid for those projects continues to flow. We reduced our costs, that creates this, an opportunity for us to fit in this new project. You know, the danger, I guess, this, it's an opportunity and it's a challenge. If we, you know, we don't proceed with that, then as that positive cash flow grows, it'll get included in our budget and as it begins to drop off, it's going to cause budget problems in the future, right? It's the dips, it's the ups and the downs that cause the problems. And so that's why we're trying to manage to more of a steady state or a flat line, which is, you know, what we're showing here. You know, we hope obviously to improve on this as we go forward and we'll have lots of conversations. You know, this process that Chuck just described to you is going to take a number of years. And there's years here that we're looking at construction, borrowing construction, final cost reports as we move over the course of the project to final financing. And at any point during that period of time, you have a chance to improve your financing and also to make decisions about how your future looks. So this is one model that we have worked out and we think makes sense. But you know, certainly one challenge is that little dip that you see going out into, what, 2024? So what should that look like? We'll have lots more conversation about that as we move on. I think this is a very reasonable plan. You know, but if we can improve on it, we'd like to do that. And maybe it should look a little different into the future. Because I do think over a long, long period of time, I think I have an opinion right now and I don't know what Chuck thinks, but I think being around, over time, getting to zero, kind of being bouncing around somewhere around zero, in terms of local share is probably the long term healthiest place to be in the tax gap environment. You know, this has, this has been a boon to the district over a long period of time because of that positive cash flow, but it poses challenges with the tax gap. So, but getting to zero is, can be a challenge as well. So we need to manage that, we need to think about it. And this is the time, this is the opportunity to be able to do that. So we'll be having lots more conversations about this thing. I guess what I'm, all I'm adding to this is, you know, that this is tentative and that as we move forward and think more about this and as we get the experience of a couple more state budgets under our belt. We've got a couple of years to make these final decisions, but we want to be able to provide you now and today is a reasonable path forward that makes sense, that makes it acceptable to move forward with the project. Any other questions? So if there's no other questions on that, I did mention that, or Dr. Putnam mentioned that there's some more work left to be done. This is said tentative, as you looked at the slides and as Dr. Putnam talked about the work that we proposed to do, the building aid condition work, the site work, the loops at each of the elementary schools. We also want to, all those slides said tentative, it's tentative for two reasons. The first reason, of course, being you have not yet adopted the project. So until the board takes action, it's going to remain tentative. But it's tentative for a more practical reason as well. We want to take the opportunity over the next couple of weeks, before we move forward to finalize the project at the next board hearing, to adopt CECL and at a subsequent meeting to approve the vote, we wanted to spend some time to take a deep breath, take another look at some of the ancillary spaces. So over the course of the next few weeks, we're going to be talking to principals about classroom additions, do they make sense? The gym additions at Scribner and Cobble's, loading docks. Because the new information that we have that we've not previously had has to do with aidability of those spaces, the relative aidability for the rest of the project. So as you know, we went to SED, we pitched our case, they provided us with some additional information. They're giving us, this works, essentially the gym space, cafeterias and so on work based on student units. So that they assign students, it generates money and that money turns into aid through sort of a complicated formula. But a gym addition is a gym station, it's a classroom essentially, in terms of number of students. And relative to the cost of a gym, so you get the same money to build a classroom, a kindergarten classroom, as you do to build a gym. And the costs clearly are different, right? So we just want to make sure that the gym additions make sense, that they are, as you know, because of challenges in design of the building, the gyms are in the middle of the building. So it means... So, so it means that in our plans, we've ended up with separate gym additions. Does that make sense? Are we really comfortable with that? Do we understand what we're going to do? Do we understand how that's going to be used as we move forward? Are we real comfortable with that? Just take a deep breath, take a look at those cafeteria additions. We did not get building aid units assigned by SED for the cafeteria additions. That, you know, they're comfortable with, you know, right now we have, what, five or six seedings because of the size of the cafeteria. So your first lunch seating might be at ten o'clock in the morning and then continue towards the end of the day. They're fine with that. They're, the, so the way the formula works, they just don't assign units. So that's okay. It means we, it's our, it becomes a community choice, it's our choice. If we want to do those additions, it turns into that local share. Right now, the reason this project is seventy percent aidable and not a hundred against the seventy percent bond ratio is because of those non-aidable factors, right? So what you've seen today, and assumes we do the gyms, assumes we do the cafeterias, but if we don't, we could make it better, right? In terms of aidability. But do we want those spaces? Yes. Let's take a deep breath, take a step back, look at that, does it make sense? Is this where we want to end up? And just make sure, in terms of those really relatively expensive, lesser aidable spaces, that it really makes sense as we move forward. So we're going to spend the next week doing that, we'll come back to. I keep, loading docks obviously are, are not aidable, it's a piece of site work, doesn't make sense in the context of the building. So we just want to have that, take this last opportunity before we final, ask you to finalize it, to make sure that that makes sense. So it's tentative for that reason, a little bit of final scope review. We'll be doing that by having meetings with the principals and directors. Dr. Putnam is going to take the lead.
Sorry.
That's, that too, thank you. I thought, am I doing that? So we'll, and, and we'll have those conversations to be able to come to you with a, with final recommendations. So at the November twenty eighth, we plan to, in the final budget, final scope, may be different or, and then, or may have those little tweaks in it, but we'll have that conversation there. After that, our timeline has the board making a determination at the twenty eighth as to the potential environment as we go forward, as, as our model projects as we go forward into next year. So kindergarten, we're projecting a class size of about three twenty seven. That's smaller than sixteen seventeen, we have three hundred forty one students, but larger than this year's. One through five, you can see the numbers here, we're growing again. We grew, we grew from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, we're projecting that that'll continue. At the high school, we'll, we'll have a dip. And that's solely due to the eighth grade. So the, the eighth grade in our schools right now, that eighth grade cohort is tiny. And they've been working their way through our system for a very long time. So they're leaving Bay Trail now, they're on their way to the high school. Every year we have a bigger, so this will be the, the first year of that impact, the graduating class is more normally sized, if you will. And you can see this in table four of your complete enrollment projection. So graduating class will be more normal than that smaller class size comes in. So we see a dip, solely due to that one, one class at the high school. Then that'll level out and I think we'll start to see the bigger elementary schools over time begin to march their way through the, through the grades. Are there any questions about, about that? You have a, I should say, just so everyone knows, you have, this is a summary of a very complete report that you have. The report that you have also includes information on non-public school enrollments and home school students and, and our students enrolled in other, other districts and other districts' students enrolled in non-public schools within Penfield. So lots of data and lots of information, but really the key to it for our purposes is that table number four, that takes a look at the history of enrollments and projects them forward. That's really what this summary tonight is about. With that, then I would move on to goals, assumptions and guidelines. You have, I think it's what, fifteen pages of discussion about goals, what we aspire to, what the board believes we should attend to in terms of a budget process. Assumptions, things that we think about the future, things that we believe are going to happen. Really a set of, of guidelines and guesses and estimates about what our future will hold, around which we're going to build a budget process and then it's, and that. And so those goals, those, those hopes, those estimates of our future and future condition turn into guidelines for how we would build a budget. So there's nine goals, fourteen assumptions, I'm sorry, fifteen assumptions and fourteen guidelines. It begins with the board's goals. You heard earlier tonight about the importance of goals to the work that these elementary schools do. This is the star they set their ship by and, and certainly that's true for the budget process as well. So academic achievement and excellence partnerships and, and most clearly expressed in the budget process is fiscal responsibility. With that, though, it all does begin with instructional programs. So we always like to begin this presentation with really just a viewer, a little bit of information about what's changing there in our environment that could drive changes in budgets. Let's Jim talk about that.
Thank you, Mark. And the board and the public saw some of this with our, our last meeting, the instructional data summary, and we talked about what to expect coming forward. But a little bit of context to think back that it was two thousand ten, just, just seven years ago, when the Board of Regents and the New York State Education Department first rolled out the Common Core learning standards. And we didn't begin teaching and assessing to those standards until the two thousand twelve, thirteen school year. So really, you know, four, five short years ago. And here we are now, as we see in a later slide, already moving forward to a new set or at least a revised set of learning standards for our K through eight students. In two thousand fourteen, then, we had the new Algebra I exam, which was aligned to the Common Core learning standards. And then fifteen, two thousand fifteen, the geometry exam, two thousand sixteen, Algebra II and English eleven. And also the SATs were redesigned, as we talked about, had the changes in scores, going back to the score out of sixteen hundred versus the score out of twenty four hundred. And now this year, here we are with the adoption of the Next Generation Learning Standards for three through eight, or the K through eight in English Language Arts and Mathematics, but also the adoption of the New York State Science Learning Standards, which are in play. And we're still working our way through the newly adopted social studies standards and the C three framework. So all of that is still in play, we're still working our way through that. We still have, well, we're quite far in terms of three through eight, ELA and math, a lot of work to do yet in social studies and certainly just beginning in science. Thank you, Mark. And so some things that we're looking at this year that we maybe didn't include in our assumptions around assessment and standards last year was the potential outsourcing of the scoring of the three through eight assessments in ELA and math. We put together a cost analysis of that and really looking at spending somewhere between ten and twelve thousand dollars annually in terms of substitute costs, materials costs and all those sorts of things put together. And now seeing that there are services available that our neighboring comparative districts have used and found to be very positive, that can be done through BOSI's at a similar cost point and that allow us to reclaim instructional time are, are of a huge benefit and that we want to, will be potentially cooking into the BOSI's portion of the budget in the future. Also looking at new global history exams and geography, two regents exams coming next year and continuing to work to assure that, ensure that our curricula are aligned to those courses and preparing our students for success on those assessments. And then now with the adoption of the Next Generation Learning Standards, new assessments in ELA and math and three through eight, potentially in targeted to begin in twenty twenty. So we're going to need to do some tweaking of our curriculum. We know that there weren't massive changes to the standards, but it is going to require some subtle changes going forward that we're going to start now so that we don't end up in the same place that we were when we implemented the Common Core learning standards with massive gaps between grade levels and expectations and understanding of students. We want to start to roll that in now so that our students are ready when that change comes and we don't have those gaps. And then certainly also new science assessments in grades four and eight aligned to the Next Generation Science Standards. That will be followed in twenty something for the US new, US history exam. We still haven't heard any target dates for that. But by twenty twenty two, we're looking at potentially having new science regents exams as well. So again, continuing to work to ensure that we have the, the curriculum developed to align to those assessments under those new standards and making sure that our students are successful and our teachers are prepared to make sure that our students are successful. And an envelope, or an umbrella really over all of that is continuing to make sure that our students are socially and emotionally ready to learn. As you've heard me say before, that, you know, we can have the best curricula, we can have the best instructional strategies, we can have the most efficient assessment strategies and the best data to drive that instruction, but if we aren't ensuring that our kids are ready to learn and their hearts and their minds, then that's all going to be for naught. So as we continue to look at the professional development and the integration of social, emotional, learning, character education and those other pieces, that, that the mental health issues and ensuring that our students are ready in that manner, those will, will drive some of our costs as well. Thank you.
So that, you know, that speaks to that connection, the instructional program to our goals is, is really, is made, is implemented through the budget. So our budget goal, overarching budget goal is that we continue a commitment to prudent financial planning and, and the challenge is one of balance, to balance the needs of students because needs can, there are always needs and there are always more needs with maintaining our programs and minimizing the impact on the taxpayer. So we talked about enrollment growth. We know that we're in that, that we are, that our pathway there is changing, that we're beginning to enter a model. So we're projecting enrollment of forty five students, growth concentrated at the elementary schools and about six percent over the next five years or so. So you'll see in our, in the document that we plan to, that we will move forward into this next budget here, planning around four sections of kindergarten at each of the elementary schools. So we'll monitor that as we go along, that's, that's changeable and we know that, but we'll pay attention to that as we move throughout the process. The assumption movement is that that's where we'll end up in the short term for next year. Tax base, or I'm sorry, the tax cap and the assumptions that go into it are, are crucially important now as we enter into what, the sixth and seventh year of the tax gap. So tax base growth factor is an adjustment in the model based on the growth of, of real bricks and mortar. So new construction in the district, not reassessment, your, your house gets reassessed and it's worth more, not that growth, the growth of new construction in the district. And that's been a little variable for us. Typically around four tenths of one percent. We're not in Rieda, certainly, but we do have spurts of growth. So you'll see in, in twelve thirteen and in sixteen seventeen, growth over one percent. And in fact, in at least one of those years, we were the highest rate of growth for that in the county. So we don't know yet what that brings for us, that'll be released in the next month. And has an impact on our tax cap because the cap formula allows you a little bit of space to accommodate that growth. The most important part of it, though, and the reason it's called the two percent tax cap is because the cap is at two percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. Right now, inflation's running at about two point one, two point two percent. So I expect that this will be the first year, we'll see. Economy can change, it can cool off, but barring some other change, this should be the first year in a few years that we're looking at a cap of two percent. So if inflation ends up being two, two or two, three, the cap says the lesser of. So moving back to the days, the first two years of the tax gap where inflation is higher than what the formula will allow us to have. And this is, this is intentionally designed into this formula. The, the tax cap formula is designed to squeeze schools. Over time, the growth in budgets has to be less than the rate of inflation, just because of this design, it's intentional. The, the lesser of the rate of inflation or two percent, if inflation goes to three percent or four percent, it will be at two. If inflation falls to nearly zero, it would be at nearly zero. So that design is, is, is intentional to, to restrain school spending over a long period of time. Where we've ended up last year, was our allowable, the allowable growth, the two percent number was one point two six percent, so the rate of inflation, four tenths, about half a percent of tax base growth. That turned into, through the complicated formula, along with some carryover and some other adjustments, to, to an allowable maximum levy. We could have gone out with two point one five percent. Our adopted levy was a little bit less than that, under, just under two percent, one point nine percent. So this year, allowable growth around two. We'll know more about where we're going to end up in the next few months and, and so you'll be receiving an update of that. But this is an, an important time to talk about this because it's important to our overall budget process. I'm estimating at two percent, that's just to give us an idea of where we're at. Based on two percent, based on tax base growth around four tenths, sort of what we've been at in the past, along with the carryover cap space that we bring in from last year, I would right now estimate about a two and a half percent maximum level of that increase. We'll update that as we move along, but I think as we start to think about a budget process, that's where we end up. And of course, I always point out, when we talk tax cap, along with it at that time, if you remember the governor's presentation of this, there's going to be a tax cap, but don't worry, there will be meaningful reform and mandate relief. The, the, the tax cap's in its sixth year and meaningful reform and mandate relief remains to be accomplished. So I, I think that, I'll wait and see how that works out. I always try also and, and give the board a, a sort of a, an update on what I think the most important and, and the potentially most troubling parts of, of our environment are. For this year, it's, it's going to be revenue limitations from the state of New York. So that last year, the state eliminated gap, eliminated gap elimination adjustment, so that is off the table. That means foundation aid is, will be, as it was last year, the focus of any changes to the state aid formulas. It remains frozen. Our aid through that foundation aid formula is about three million dollars per year, less than the formulas designed to, to distribute. That's true for many districts in the state, but changing that reality and driving money through the foundation aid formula is very expensive. So that's going to make change harder. It was easier to target districts for change with the gap elimination adjustment. And this, I think, would be the key for this year's budget. I, I, I don't know how to project this. You know, some years we know that the, the state budget is trending negative, they're looking at an out year budget deficit. This year, certainly there's a lot of things in play. School aid is about twenty six percent of the state's operating budget. So it's a major, major component of what the state spends their money on. And this year, the state's budget is sort of in, in limbo a little bit and driven by two things. So we're about halfway through their year and, and the most important part of their revenue stream, personal income taxes are not keeping pace with their budget. So they have projected, the state's budget assumed that personal income tax would grow by about nine percent during the course of this year, so that the line would slope up by about nine percent. As of the mid-year update, personal income tax receipts are actually less than last year. So the line not only didn't increase by nine, but it's gone, gone down. That's not good for the, for the, for the state's future budget. They'll start building their budget very shortly. Consensus revenue estimates were due, were due now, they never get them done on time, but about this time of year is when they're supposed to start that conversation. And they don't know where they're at. I think we all know that Wall Street's doing fine and those fourth quarter payments, bonuses and so on will be taxable, right? So it could very well be, it's possible that this all gets bailed out by Wall Street at the very tail end of their process, but we just don't know that yet. So that adds a very interesting level of uncertainty to this budget. If it, just today, the comptroller, and I didn't have a chance to look at it, but the comptroller today released his budget, his mid- comptroller today released his budget, his mid-year budget update. And he was quite gloomy and project, I didn't have it, I don't have the numbers at the top of my, at the top of my head, but he's projecting out-year def, significant out-year deficits. So we'll see. If that comes to pass, if it doesn't improve, this could be a very tight budget here. Normally I wouldn't say that because it's an election year. That tends to be good for us, right? It tends to be good for schools. The governor's running for president and governor simultaneously as a progressive. So you would think that there's going to be larger state aid increases. I'm just not sure that the money's going to be there to do it. And then when you layer in on that, and on top of all of that uncertainty, what's going on at the federal level with deductibility of, of state taxes and, and potential changes to the, to the federal tax structure that'll impact New York? It's just, we don't know where this is going to end up. We'll see it over the course of the next several months. But, but I think it's, it makes it difficult, you know, very often I'll want to say, I think this won't be a bad state aid year here. I think this will be kind of tight. I don't know. I just don't know. So we'll enter our process with that element of uncertainty. I understand that school boards and the school, and the finance committee of school boards is actually starting conversations about mid-year cuts, mid-year state aid, operating aid cuts. It's been a lot of years since we've been there. I don't think we're there yet, but it's the fact that that's sort of the subject of conversation gives you a sense of the, the sort of the anxiety that's, that's starting to percolate around that. So I think that'll be an issue. ER rates declined slightly, so the employee retirement, on our expense side, the employee retirement system, little, little bit did fairly well. So their rates are declining slightly to fourteen, nine from fifteen, three. TRS rates, which are actually a bigger bite for us, are increasing from nine point eight percent to eleven. Those aren't final yet, the TRS, the ERS rates are. But we're looking at a fairly significant increase next year in ER parent TRS rates, health insurance, depending on plan, between eight point four and, and eleven percent increases. And retirees, I go up by about six point five. So on our expense side, those major drivers in our budget, benefits for health, for retirement are going to be, are trending up fairly significantly. We know we have salary increases. We know we have a tax cap, so it's going to depend on, on state aid really, how, how all of this shakes out. Classroom, as a result of that, classroom staffing levels will be monitored, I talked about this. We've always had a practice of, of the board reviewing and, and, and thinking about secondary classes with less than fifteen students. And if we have to have reductions, if we move forward in a model that's going to require that, we would always make them, in a fashion, would minimize the impact on students in classroom instruction. The final budget guideline, I think this fits in beautifully tonight really, has to do with long-range planning. This board's always had a commitment to long-range planning. We've always tried to look, so, you know, the budget by its nature is sort of a one-year process. We vote every year and, and, and it seems like we just finish one and start the next. But really it's that, that outlook, a long-range look that provides for stability and for the instructional program that our community values. We're going to continue that. We saw tonight a, a good example of that. We're, you know, it's not a building project because we want to do something, it's a building project because it makes sense, because it'll allow us to offer the kind of program and space that our community wants. And it also fits a financial model that makes sense and provides some stability over time. So we'll continue that and we'll continue that throughout this process. So that, that is really the budget development process, serving the needs of everyone, serving the needs of students, maintaining programs and facilities and minimizing, and always looking to minimize the impact on taxpayers. Just to, to remind you where we're at, where we're going, tonight's budget goes in assumptions. We looked at enrollment. One last look at goals. Typically there's some refresh, refreshing of some of the assumptions, we'll have a little bit more information. We'll do tax cap update and a budget forecast and reserve plan in December. And that's the pre-work. We're done thinking about the budget and we start to build one in January with administration. Review of programs, the specialty programs in January. We've tentatively scheduled a board work session before the February sixth meeting where we'll review capital, so the, the loser grounds, debt service, transportation. And we'll finish with a program review, the general instructional program at the second February meeting. BOCs in March. And with that, by that second meeting in March, we'll be taking a look at our first complete budget with the revenue side, the completed expenditure side. And, and we'll finalize that, we need to finalize that in April, I think April seventeenth budget for a May one public hearing and a May fifteenth vote. That vote will be through the high school from six to nine. And all of the information, I'll say this every night or every time we do this, and I know everyone here gets tired of me saying it, but it's all on the web. So all the information, the PowerPoints, the videos, snippets of me doing this are all available on the website under quick links in budget information. So are there any questions? Are there any, is there, was there anything in those resources and assumptions? There's a lot of stuff I didn't touch on. Is there, do you have any questions that I could, could answer?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, I was going to ask the board, but you weren't done talking yet. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Board members, any questions or comments? Once again, quite thorough and.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports for the evening.
Okay. Board members, we're on page two of our agenda. Yes, under facilities, yes, thank you. No, that's fine. All right, our annual fire inspection for fall of two thousand seventeen. During September two thousand seventeen, the annual fire inspection as mandated by the State Education Department took place in all school buildings and outbuildings of the Penfield Central School District. Ms. Dawn E. Howe, Fire Inspector, Genesee Valley Educational Partnership, Health, Safety and Risk Management Office conducted the inspections. All buildings were inspected and reports are on file. Minor violations were noted, including doors being dropped open, art materials hanging from the ceiling and use of extension cords, as was previously explained. All violations have been corrected and all buildings are in conformance. As required by Section eight oh seven A of the education law, public notice of the filing of the fire safety report will be published in the November second, two thousand seventeen edition of our official newspaper, The Daily Record. For financial items, there are none. And for our building emergency response plans, we will go forward with approval. Every school district is required by NYCRR, Section one fifty-five point seventeen, to have building-specific emergency response plans to ensure the safety and health of children and staff, as well as to ensure an integration coordination with similar emergency planning at the municipal, county and state levels. The building-level safety plans are amended annually to include updates with new staff names and roles, as well as other relevant contact information. The building emergency response plans have been updated and submitted to New York State, the Monroe County Sheriff's Office and the Brighton Police Department. May I have a motion and a second, please, that the building emergency response plan amendments described above be approved? Any questions or comments? Allohs in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Policy review, Dr. Potnow.
Love to talk about policy. So there's a lot of policies on the agenda. If you could take a look underneath first read, all of the policy, the one thousand series policy in there from eleven twenty through twelve twenty-one. You're going to, the board and the community will see a lot of these because the policy committee has started our five-year review of, of policies. And so last year, we didn't do that, but we sort of took a year off to focus on a couple specific things. But this year, what the board does is that, or sorry, the policy committee does is they start at the beginning, the one thousand series, and we'll work our way through the eight thousand series. And you'll see policies come to this board meeting and online. So these changes here, there's no major, there's some fine edits on there, but I just encourage folks to go and take a look. This really deals, a lot of it is of law. It deals with board members and what it is to be a board member. For an example, for a minor change is that we mentioned, you know, that we put things on the website, you know, as opposed to just a newspaper. And so take a, take a look at those one thousand series. Policy committee, does that sound good?
Yeah.
The, the next set of policies under first read that are in the seven thousand, it's interesting, the policy committee has been looking at this, there was a district clerk conference where a legal counsel from, from our, one of our law firms really recommended and highly encouraged that boards remove the word insure from their policies because while we always want to say things like we're going to ensure the safety of students, that, that word has a lot of legal connotations in regards to making sure that we limit our liability. We talk about this a lot, is we can't insure things, you know, we can, we can, we can hope and we can make, we can put things in place and we can create practices and protocols, but by saying we're going to ensure something will happen, the board and therefore the district are guaranteeing it. And so it's just one of those pieces that the law firms have noticed is, and are recommending to boards to, to just review their policies and, and remove the word insure from them. So we're starting with the seven thousand series because they all deal with students. And so the, the policy committee is going to be going through quite a few policies. When you do a search on our website for insure, in the policy handbook, there are a number that come up. So we're going to be reviewing those. But I think it's fair that all of those changes in the seven thousand series, that was the first read, are, are really only changing and editing for the word insure. We didn't, as the policy committee, dig deep into those to look at other wording changes. We will as we move through the full policy review manual, but we wanted to not get hung up on really getting into changes to those because they're going to come up soon when we move through the policy review. And then we do have second reading, which is the policy around evaluation of personnel. The policy committee reviewed comments that came in. No changes were made between the first read and the second read. And that really is just around the fact of putting it into the current law. It's around that parents have the ability to get an APPR score. And that's very specific to this education law that we use for APPR. And so we'll monitor that as we move.
If I may add that regarding the word insure and how we're replacing it, it's not, not just a matter of, oh, what are we going to put instead? We have some very lively debates on how we're going to replace it to make sure that the policy is still accurate and what our intent is. So just so that you realize, we just don't have a list of synonyms and every time we plug one, so.
No, that's a good thought.
That's a, that's a great point because it's not just a find and replace, right? It really is a lot of conversation.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, thank you. All right, so may I have a motion and a second, that policy six one three oh, evaluation of personnel be approved as presented?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Allohs in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right, president's remarks. We have our Albany advocacy trip coming up. Oh, Barb, you're a go. All right. The registration deadline is November twenty-first. I know Lisa and I are considering going. You're in, John's in. Okay, okay. All right, great. You know, this is a yearly event. It's one day. It's effective, but it takes time and effort, you know, from the, from everyone who goes. And so anyone who can go, it's always appreciated. And, you know, we're looking forward to it. And yes, if you are going, okay, you know that Barb and John are going and Lisa and I will let you know by the twenty-first. And, and Carol knows and you don't know, or you are going. Okay, so Mark is a maybe as well. Okay. All right, very good. No unfinished business, no new business. So if there's nothing else, may I have a motion and a second, that the meeting be adjourned at nine thirty-two? Any questions or comments? Allohs in favor? None opposed? Thank you.